Good evening. Welcome to Marquette Charter Township's regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting of February 12th, 2020. It is 7:00 PM. With that, let us introduce ourselves. Jim?
Jim Johnson, White Oak Drive.
Steve Haken in Lake Enchantment.
Mike Springer, Eagles Nest Road.
Dave Wigan, Berken Road.
Jason McCarthy, Planning and zoning minister.
Okay, you have an agenda before you. Any changes? If not, somebody make a motion?
Some will.
Okay, Johnson?
Sir.
Second. Haken in. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the minutes from January 22nd. Somebody want to make a motion? What did I do? Oh, Dave does. Okay.
You see my lights?
Yeah, the light worked.
There, I have some questions on the minutes, and for the life of me, I can't find where I made the marks now, but it was the January 22nd minutes is where we had the election of officers?
Uh, no, that would have been the previous one.
Was it regarding the context of the meeting minutes, or just the secretary? No, that old, the election of officers showed it wrong in the minutes.
We corrected those. Cause it showed, I'm trying to think if it showed Steve for two of them.
Right. That was corrected. All I need to be corrected is at the bottom here where it says, "Planning Commission Secretary," which is Dave and not Steve.
So with that, anybody want to make a motion on January 22nd minutes?
I would prefer January 22nd.
Wigan, second? Somebody?
Second.
Okay, Haken. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Public comment. Mr. Rand.
Well, just, if you're listening.
Thanks for coming.
Fun fact, fun fact, film agenda.
I, just a quick question. Do you have an appointment in mind for Planning Commissioner yet?
Nope, and I neglected to even announce it. I'm sorry at the last meeting, so I'll bring it up Tuesday again.
Okay.
I had some feelers out. I left a bunch of messages and never got any phone calls back. So we placed an ad, two ads in. We could go Friday, a display ad with your explanation of what the duties were, and then a line ad under the help on it.
Okay. I know it's up on our Facebook page too.
Yeah, and then we got a phone call.
Yeah, so we harder and harder to find people.
All right, new business. Sugarloaf Mountain Parking Lot Project Concept.
Yeah, so as the staff report explains, we recently contacted the, by the county planning department, specifically longtime colleagues here of Carlstrom, who is the planning director, now planning manager at the county. And we've known for a long time on a nice day, at Sugarloaf, there's vehicles that are parking in the drivelanes actually, in some cases along that stretch. So, in an effort to mitigate that, they are proposing, one, to expand the current driveway. And I apologize, this is almost more informational, other than the fact that site plans will be forthcoming at some point, but I wanted to put this on your radar because I've been working behind the scenes on this with that committee or the Ad hoc Advisory Group. To expand the existing parking lot, and then to develop an additional parking lot to the south and near that corner that's on the south. Just before, and I'll show you, you can see where that existing parking lot is there. And then the triangle is the approximate location of the new proposed parking lot. So there was a series of variations of what they could do there. We elected to go with the parking arrangement that allowed for the most vehicles, including tour buses. So the county's going to spend, I believe, general fund dollars on this project this year to get the parking lot in shape. And then we discussed potentially piggybacking on an M and RTF grant application of theirs to co-write, or we would be co-sponsors, no financial implications, but to assist them and to co-sponsor an application for trash recyclables, picnic tables. And, excuse me, then you'll see that there's a, kind of a new trail that'll have to be cut in to tie into the existing trails. Looks like a great project, and I was happy to be called on it to assist the county with the planning of it. And I know that the county is also trying to work with the road commission to potentially have a, either deceleration lane or a bypass lane for those vehicles coming either from the north to have a center turn lane to turn into, or if you're coming from the south, to have a deceleration lane. I'm not sure if the traffic trips would actually warrant that, more than maybe a few days a year, but it is something that we're looking at, working with the county, road commission on. So you've got logging trucks in the area, a lot of tourists from out of town that kind of get disorientated sometimes, either slow down or stop. It's just, I've seen a lot there, because I usually recreate out at Little Presque or Wentmore, and so I've certainly noticed it. And I'm happy to see that the county's taken advantage of that. So I will keep you posted. You can expect to see a site plan of some sort come forward as this project matures, but right now it's in a very infantile stage.
Is that Tony property?
Yes.
As a motorist that goes by that site sometimes as much as six times a day, that's a very busy, especially in the summer. Sometimes they're parked on both sides of the street. And it's certainly the deceleration lanes and the bypass lanes would be very helpful in addition to parking. My question is, are they going to close the other parking lot, or keep them both open?
Nope, nope. They'll expand the existing and have an overflow.
Nice.
And if you see the numbers in the staff report, there was 60,000 visitors in 2019, and I believe that was up from about fif- it was up 15,000 from the previous year. So it is on the rise, and it is the most attended recreational spot in Marquette County.
How do they quantify the numbers, you know?
They had a trail counter out this year.
Oh, literally, I?
Yep.
Okay.
It's like an infrared.
Oh, okay.
I believe.
I'd like to make a motion that we support Marquette County's Sugarloaf Parking Project, and ask staff to write a letter of support on our behalf.
I have a question about that.
Oh, Dave, I got the attention of this. Go ahead.
I'm not sure that the Planning Commission can reglet our support. I think they have to recommend to the board that they have to.
Is that what it is?
I believe so.
Okay. I was just reading with the review recommendations.
Yeah, was a question I had there, and I think the appropriate motion might be to recommend, to announce, you know, to may have a motion of the Planning Commission to support the project, and to recommend that it goes onto the board for a letter of support.
Let's amend that. I'll support your motion. Mr. Wigan?
Thanks.
Second. All in fa- any questions? Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Motion carries.
You can put that on next week's agenda then.
That'd be nice, if you would please.
Talking about Tuesday's agenda?
Yes.
Okay, next item. 2021 Michigan Department of Transportation US 41 Project Access Management Recommendations. It's tentative and it's for discussion.
Yeah, so this document that you have at your dais there, I did not put in the packet because I didn't want it to be public necessarily, even though if there was a lot of business owners here, I guess they would find this out. As we've been working on the 2021 project, excuse me, with MDOT, there were a number of recommendations that were made years ago that are access management related. And so, MDOT and myself went through this list, there's about 13 or so, and we identified ones that MDOT was comfortable in approaching the businesses with, and that as part of the corridor group, I concurred with. So I just wanted to go through these, because not all of them will be sought, at least based on recommendations from MDOT as far as cost go and other, I guess, variables. But, so if you look at your sheet, the second one down is 1-15. And that one discusses the closure of the eastern driveway at Red Lobster. So if you see, I'm gonna step over here to point some stuff over here. So you see here you have three driveway, or four actually, within this proximity. And there are some challenges to those who are pulling out here, this would be the eastern driveway over at Lobster, you've got Culvers here, Art Van right here. So potential conflicts with people pulling out of this location. And this driveway throat is actually wide enough to allow for, you know, traffic coming in and traffic going out. And MDOT actually offered to widen that driveway throat if need be to, to address that more. So at some point, we'll be addressing Red Lobster, or at least discussing with them the potential to do so. So this one right here would be eliminated. You know, we had discussions about coming all the way across with something, but the issue is that MDOT has to remain within their right of way, so they can't be going on private property and making adjustments. You can see the sign here and the light fixtures, this estimates about the right of way line in that area. So this is the targeted driveway in that one.
Was any, I'm sorry, was any consideration given to incorporating Culvers and Red Lobster to one entrance there? Because you almost have the same instance where you have somebody coming out of Culvers heading eastbound, and somebody coming from the west, turning into, and so you're still getting that, you know, pulling out, crossing over. You know what I'm saying there? I mean, that would seem to be a natural place for a common drive between the two.
Yeah, that was discussed. In fact, just a service drive that would, you know, kind of tie into all of these.
And how far does the right, right of way? I know it's 100 feet, but where abouts does that right of way go?
The right of way is probably right along in this area.
Okay.
It's funny how these parking spaces got put in here, because normally that would be a clear area, if we're being reviewed by myself or the Planning Commission of today. I don't know how, or if that was some kind of variance or something that was provided, but normally this would be a clear area. So I will make a note of that, Steve, and we can discuss that with both parties, both businesses, about doing something there.
And both of those are tied to a back service drive, correct?
Yeah, that's one of the reasons that the Culvers driveway was kind of obviously left open, because they have to have reasonable access to 41. And, you know, the group just thought that this one could probably be eliminated without much. Now going to Red Lobster and asking them about that might be a different story, but, you know, these are all asks, they're not really tells. So we'll see, we'll see. And, you know, you have to throw them a bone by saying, you know, we'll realign your driveway and make it wider, or, I'm sorry, MDOT will.
You know, when you put that together with getting rid of that Michigan left right across from Lobster's drive, you could move that.
Yeah, that was discussed. In fact, the state police, we always have a state police representative at our corridor meetings, and, you know, we've seen people do this move here.
Oh, wow.
I've seen, personally seen that move. This one's not, you know, and everybody in the group has made that move where they go simply across here, even to get in Culvers, they'll just go through the drive and come out. So that's not really an illegal move there. And so that's the reason why that Michigan left may not, may not move. Because even if you shift it, okay, if you shift it this way, then they're coming in here. If you shift it this way, they're, you know, they'll be coming, trying to go in there, which is fine, but, yeah, the group didn't really see that as being a problem.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
I see a lot between the four driveways and traffic cutting across on that Michigan left. That is always confusing down there. And you always see somebody doing something that would be ill advised.
Well, yeah, certainly this one.
Even cutting across, I mean, that contradicts everything MDOT says, is it going to be a movement across multiple lanes of traffic? That's the reasoning that they were looking at, Wright Street, closing that, removing that Michigan left on Wright Street. That allows the traffic to go across and connect.
Yeah, that one's not going to be moved either.
No, that's going to be moved.
No, you're allowed to make that, that movement there. State police and MDOT said the same thing, that it's not an illegal move to come across right here. At least the state police said they wouldn't, they wouldn't issue a ticket on that.
But if they're headed back to Culvers?
Yes.
That's illegal.
Yeah, a little different. Second one is I-16, which is the next one down. So at one point, you know, this service, the mall, this is Applebee's and Taco Bell there, and this driveway is just underutilized. It's not a highly used access anymore. And as such, and because the township desires to run a walkway or a pathway along here, closing this driveway would really aid in that, as well as perhaps the realignment and removal of the deceleration lane, which gives us more room basically for a pathway. So MDOT's trying to, and I've been begging them, trying to associate a pathway as part of the 2021 project on the north side, in between Commerce and Wright Street.
Thanks.
There are some, there's a little bit of grade differential in here that we'd have to work through. And you can see that there's an outfall here, where you have some bonding issues that would be resolved as well.
Now, that, when that road was highly used when the mall was a mall?
Yeah.
So, I mean, would you be cutting off your nose in spite of your face? Have you ever wanted more development going on back there?
Well, I think what took that away is when they put the directional control medium in the middle there. It's because most of that traffic was cutting across.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Oh, yeah, they widened there?
Going here, yeah.
Well, since they put that in, I don't see a lot of people using it at all.
Well, just keep in mind that these are all asks that have to go through the property You know, these are the desires of the group, it's not necessarily what the outcome will be, but these are the ones that we're going to pursue that make the most sense, and that are kind of the low hanging fruit as far as improving mobility in the corridor. I-17, which is on the top, I believe for the next 18.
Yeah, I see that, I didn't know those were even there.
Yeah. So this is an interesting one, because obviously we have DP Fox moving in or reassuming the Chevrolet brand here. So we had some discussions about this with them already. Of course, they're applying for zoning compliance and their business license and getting their fire inspection, so we've been working with them on that. And I don't even know if they were aware that these are here, but they're fine with that. And the other thing that we notified them of is the fact that there's no deceleration lane there, that we have car haulers pulling up right here and offloaded vehicles, which is not ideal, especially in the winter time. So the olive branch that I extended to Fox was that if they wanted to coordinate with MDOT during the 2021 project, there may be some cost sharing if they wanted to reconfigure their parking lot and have a more conducive driveway for their property. So, you know, maybe, these two are definitely going away, they're not utilized anymore anyway, but perhaps this would shift to the, to the west with a deceleration lane, and just have a much safer approach to that, to that business. So, business has been there for a long time, and, and Fox is very receptive to that. So they, I know that they did reach out to MDOT and start to coordinate some stuff, so, I mean, likely the developer will end up paying for the majority of that if they choose to exercise that option. But because MDOT's going to be doing curb work in this area, they did offer to cost share on some of that stuff, you know, perhaps some design work and some of the quantity.
Jason, what happens to the truck offload then? Does that still stay in?
Well, that was my main goal in talking to Fox, was to get that vehicle hauler off the road. Yeah. So to create a driveway that's, this is pretty much an older driveway. I mean, I guess the width is okay, and the turn radius might be all right, but, you know, to have a place where that car hauler can decelerate, get into the development, and then offload as opposed to doing it at the road.
I was reading someplace here, it might have been in the minutes, but Mr. Dietrichson that was here, he was going to look into, find out if all those special use permits, if they still apply to the old Frye?
Yeah.
And the back entrance and?
Yeah, the special use permit for the rear access driveway is grandfathered, in my opinion.
Okay.
And it, and the original driveway was grandfathered anyway.
Okay.
I mean, it doesn't change.
Doesn't change whatever restrictions were placed.
Yeah, I just said it's going to be treated the same way as the Subaru, under the same kind of scrutiny, no commercial vehicles, and the configuration of the way it's laid out now will remain the same. 24-foot entrance, the fence stays there, the buffer yard remains the same, and they're okay with that.
Good, thank you.
Yes, sir. So here's a menagerie. This is Lynn's business here, and this is, what's his name?
Brentwood.
Period?
Brentwood.
Oh, Brentwood.
Yeah.
Gil.
So obviously you have three within relatively close proximity coming down the hill here, not a great scenario. So the idea was to close this driveway. At least eliminate one. Or wait. Close the west driveway, I'm sorry, this one, which creates more separation between these two, which makes.
That's a great coming out of that parking lot on the, on the west side, that west parking lot, that's quite a great going down to that next parking area.
Right, yeah, of course, looking at a two dimensional map, you're like, okay, we'll just tie these together, but, like you said, that gray change there, utilities, signage, all those things are kind of in play there, so it made the most sense to request that will be closed.
Wait, is that just a house residence there?
I believe it is, must be his.
Well, they had, they rented two sides, it was the original home, and then they split it in half, and they rented it as two separate units. And the last I talked to him, because they have a small apartment in, right off the office, right off the lobby, and they were going to, because they have a little girl, they were going to move into one of the sides, or both of them, and expand their breakfast area in the lobby, so that maybe actual residents, either now or next year, whether they do both sides or not, because they split it, they took one of the garage side and actually made an apartment in there that they could rent.
Yeah, we treated it at the corridor meeting as a residence, so it makes sense.
I would think if that was a residence that was associated with Brentwood, that they could just remove two of those driveways and just use the driveway in the Brentwood, isn't it?
There's a great.
Yeah, I don't think that that ties in anywhere there.
Just the great issue that?
A great issue. This is Range Telecommunications here, this is the walk-in clinic here, and the idea here was to eliminate this drive.
I don't see where anybody having a problem with that, eh?
Right. And, and to potentially tie this island together, so that you had kind of this movement here. We'll see about that.
Is that, is that a, someone's home between those two businesses?
No, that's the old alterations place that was purchased by a chiropractor out of Escanaba a couple of years ago, but they have done nothing with it.
Is that drive entrance that's basically south of his, is that his drive entrance? I mean, would he have, would he have to get some sort of an agreement with Range across that? I mean, you know, what's?
Yeah, potentially there would be an easement that would be drafted here, but, I mean, you got parking spaces that are five feet off the roadway. Pull in, here you go.
Do we, like, that's been vacant, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Do we notify them in writing that they need to bring it into conformity with all the little issues they got?
Such as?
Well, like parking and stuff.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
But I think the rule is you got to notify them after it's been vacant for, what is it, a year or 121 days or something, that if it's vacant that long, it has to come into compliance before they can reopen it?
Uh, I don't know, I guess I'd have to look into that. My view of it was that before they bought it, they were consulting with us. What are the issues with this site? We laid it all out, you know, the driveway access, it's a super narrow lot that goes really deep back. And I, one of the reasons, you can't see it on here, but I think the house that's back behind former Bonanza, part of it's actually on his property line, and I know that they were going to do some battle on that, so.
You might, you might want to check that, I'm sure I read that, that nonconforming properties that are closed and vacant for so many days, and I think, I thought it was 120 days, that you could send them a letter and notify them that if it was not reestablished as a business and for the next 121 days, it has to be brought into compliance with some of the minor nonconforming or, I can't remember exactly how.
Well, I know that nonconformities that exist for longer than 365 days need to be brought up to compliance, but I will check the vacancies.
Yeah, that was tied into the vacancy.
Okay.
I think that happened on the 550 store. I remember that. It was the issue of how long it was closed, and they wanted it remodeled, but I remember 120 days too. So check Phil's.
It's in there with the nonconformity or something. Unless we, unless we edit it out and we did something, did the last changes.
I will look into it, thank you. This one might be a little bit more difficult to see on here, but this is the, you know, Kawasaki shop, the former Midas subway. So reasonable access obviously is here, but on this particular drive, there are two entrance points to the Zambon, and the idea was to close this one here, to create more separation between these two movements. And then this driveway would be obviously updated with an improved radius to allow turning into it, because obviously it's more of an exit point that this. And then finally, this is the new Midas location, and you can see that there was also, there was some work done here to put in a curb island, but there was a, a drive in here, and I don't think this one's going to be an issue, because currently the employees are parking along the front of that. So the idea was to remove that one, and they would be able to access easily through this area and have that, and be able to go around.
Yeah, the way it's set up now, that's all parking on the east side there, isn't it?
Mr. Wigan is correct that under nonconformities, Section 2304(c), talks about section 2304(c), talks about a 12-month period, consecutive months, evidence of an intention to abandon the existing non-conforming use. At the end of 365-day period, the non-conforming use shall be, shall not be reestablished, and any future use shall be in conformity with the provisions of the ordinance.
Okay, so that's a land use.
Yeah.
And we had an issue with that with the former Fat Boys, because in my view, Fat Boys was vacant and not being used. That's a commercial use in a urban residential district. And so I asked Roger if he agreed with my opinion, and he did not. He says there has to be an intentional abandonment of a business, i.e., they sell their liquor license, they get rid of their equipment, things of that nature. So, the burden of proof would always be on the township, and I think that, now, non-conformities that are not conducive with access management principles would be covered under a zoning compliance application for a change of use, in my view. So, and then you have major and minor non-conformities, some minor non-conformities can continue to exist as long as they're not expanded upon, so, yeah, I mean, I understand where you found that in the, in the ordinance, but there's a little bit more to it than that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. To follow up finally on that, I will keep you abreast of any progress that's made. I suspect that we'll be talking to the businesses, much as we did along the 2019 project, we spoke with all the businesses along the corridor and showed them what the project was, what they could expect as far as delays and issues with people getting into their business as part of that project, so we'll be doing the same to those businesses as well as these and asking for, you know, those condolences on driveways.
And then probably gonna, what, midsummer before they do the closing?
Yeah.
So, will you do this in conjunction with MDOT?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we go out together.
So it's just not on the township to talk to these businesses?
No, it always works better when you're able to explain, you know, I mean, the ultimate reason is to have safe passage for customers, easy access, so that's kind of the way we frame it.
So, did you look at Apple Camps, two driveways right next to each other? I remember when we approved that, the night that Al was here from Marquette County and talking about access management, how we need to eliminate driveways, and we went ahead and approved the two driveways.
So that area is gonna be treated a little bit differently, we may be creating a, or MDOT may be creating a, a drive along that whole frontage there, from Grayville and Mead all the way up to Wausau Homes, so that's, that's been discussed.
Thank you. Anything else on, we have unfinished business, we have draft marijuana zoning text amendment discussion, and I also wanna thank, even though it's more paper, I wanna thank planning staff for printing out the whole nomograph there, it's nice to sometimes not work on a computer and work on hard copy.
Yeah, based on your and Ryan's discussion at the last meeting, we went ahead and added those into the land use nomograph. Didn't really nail down land use intensities yet, but at some point we'll work through that, and then it's just a matter of obviously which zoning districts that you're looking at putting those into, and I would imagine there would be special use permits throughout. But tonight's discussion was more geared towards moving into Article 16, which is detailed use regulations.
How do you determine the use intensity for something like this, it's relatively new?
Well.
Part of it has to do with?
Yeah, traffic and, I mean, a medical marijuana grower, I guess you could probably put that in the same category as a farm or.
So you gotta be able to.
It's not an exact science. So, I'll go through those at some point for the next meeting and have those tentatively put in there for you, and then you guys can come in and book them up.
So, do we wanna go through Article 15 and talk about what we think land use intensities are, and put where we think special use permits or temporary permits?
I would think that we just put them in the zoning district, except they think we think that's where we took the discussion was the last meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
But we can also.
Think that's a whole separate issue.
We can also speculate or surmise what the land use intensity would be while we do this. In other words, I'm looking at page five here in the ordinance, I think that's the first one we've got added, medical marijuana grower. But I put it at a three, maybe a farmer or host might be less, but because of the type of crop, I'm saying land use intensity of three, and should that be in resource production with a special use permit? What do you guys think?
I have, I have a comment on that.
Okay.
A medical marijuana grower doesn't mean he's growing it out in a field.
Yeah, I would say most of it's gonna be grown indoors.
Most of that, most of that is grown indoor.
Just for.
And I would, I would think for that reason, it would end up in general business segregated, segregated business and resource production, depending on what type of operation it is.
What do you think about land use intensity?
I have no idea, because I have no idea how you figure that out.
I'm guessing it's a three, based on some of these other things.
It's a three because of what you're comparing.
But you know, even, even if it's inside of a building, there may be odors that are associated with it, correct?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, and I'm looking at a fish hatchery, that's gotta have odors, that, that's a two, so this should be at least a two or a three.
Yeah, but those are good odors.
Those are good odors?
Fish hatchery.
If you like fish, if you're not allergic to them. Jason would like those.
Fish hatcheries?
Yeah, I kinda figured all three.
Yeah, we can pencil them in.
Yeah, why don't we just go through this and give our ideas, so we got something done on this, move forward with it. So, I'm looking at page five, again, recreation marijuana grower, now what do a recreation grower, inside again, Dave?
Yeah, I would think all three of those would be under the same classifications, they could be inside as well as outside.
So, general business, segregated business, and resource production.
That would, and then, you know, depending on whether it's an outside or an inside operation, that's why, and it would all be special use permit, right?
Okay. Okay, recreation excess marijuana grower, I put a land use intensity of four, this is excess grower, do we wanna do those same three zoning districts? General business, segregated business, resource production.
I would think everything's under the classification of grower, and I would think they all have the same potential as to where that activity's gonna occur.
That makes sense to you guys?
Jason, you want?
So, the next one on page six.
Wait a minute, Mike, we're not done beating this up yet.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree that those are all land use intensities of three, and that they would all be special use permits under GB, SB, and RP.
So you, all of them are three?
In my view.
Okay.
This is all gonna get vetted through our league of council and everything, so I don't think at this point we can be wrong.
All right. Page six, medical marijuana processor.
So if you look up right above there, the food processing and packaging plant has an intensity of five above, I would probably say it would be a three or a four. And you know, I want you to understand why these land use intensities are important, because that's what determines your buffer yard from other differentiating land uses, okay? So, there's a potential that this medical marijuana processor could be located next to a residential structure, especially in the resource production district, and it may not even be a year-round structure, it could be a seasonal structure. So you, the higher the land use intensity that you give these, the more buffer you're creating between less intensive land uses.
See, I wouldn't think this would go on a resource production, I would think it'd be a general business segregated.
Okay, yeah, and that's what I think ahead of those.
So, we wanna stick with a land use of four or five on that?
I think four would be sufficient.
Okay. So we're just doing general business and segregated business? Okay.
All special use permits, right?
Yes, I'm just putting S's. Okay, page eight, we have medical marijuana provisioning center, I put that as a land use intensity of four.
I beg to differ.
Okay.
So, in this scenario, you have a, let's look at the, I think the only one that we have really around here is the fire station up in the valley, a lot of traffic, a lot of people coming in and out, it's almost like a fast food restaurant.
Okay.
And I would give that a higher classification, so that if it is located next to even a, even a less intensive commercial business, that you'd wanna increase that buffer between the two.
That makes sense. So, now, are we gonna just general business and segregated business?
It's basically a retail operation, I don't know why it couldn't be in development district.
Exactly, I had an S there too.
Yep.
So, three S's, DD, GB, SB?
I wouldn't think it belongs in segregated business, segregated business is more of a light industry type thing.
Okay, well, so in other words, it doesn't belong there at all?
I wouldn't think so.
Okay.
Because it's just, it's a retail operation.
So, we got land use intensity, two S's under DD and GB. Page nine, we have recreational marijuana event organizer, I said a four, but it could be less, it depends, is this a home, can it be a home occupation, they have an office?
It's uncharted territory.
Yeah.
Well, I think with any, it's an office situation, and any office can be moved to a home with the right license, right?
Right.
But that would be a whole separate issue, that, because it doesn't actually have any product in the, on the premises.
Hopefully.
Yeah, so I would just think that you would move it, general business and development district.
Now, isn't, wouldn't that, wouldn't that just be like a home occupation? You could do that out of your home too, I mean, I don't think you're, you're, you're an organizer, it's like you're being an attorney, or it's like you're being, you know, something like that, I mean, that is your job, it's not that you're doing it at, at.
Right, I understand that.
Well, I think the biggest thing that determines whether it can be a home occupation or not is the traffic that's in and out of the home.
Yeah, but there's no sales.
Supposedly, you'd think you'd have an office and talk to people, somebody might come in to sit down and plan, but shouldn't be a lot of traffic.
So, in, in my opinion, then, when we go into the detailed use regulations, we could add a provision that says this land use could be, may be acceptable as a home occupation under the section, if it meets the requirements of that section.
So, we don't put an S under rural residential or?
I, I would not put anything.
Okay.
In the residential district, because homeowners have the ability to grow their own at home.
Right, okay.
So I don't think there's a need for that, and I don't think you wanna introduce other businesses into, especially the marijuana business, into your residential neighborhoods.
Well, the problem is if you, if you had a special use permit under rural residential, that doesn't mean it has to be out of a home anymore, that means you can provide, if you can, wanna put up a party store type thing and, and special use permit for that in a rural residential area.
Let's think of an equivalent of a, let's say, any event organizer, let's say you work for the Fourth of July fireworks committee and you're just at home making phone calls.
As long as you're not storing fireworks in your garage.
Or you're having, yeah, and then home occupation doesn't allow for any other employees other than, I think, whoever lives in the home, and you can't have any additional traffic or any vehicles that require a Class C license, so, yeah, I think that we're safe with just DD and GB there.
Okay. Recreation marijuana micro-business, what is that? Oh, we got definitions, but what is that?
I read that in the definition, I can't remember what it said, not.
Yeah, I can't either.
I think it's someone who can grow, process, and sell out of the same location, do all three, not a grower, not a processor, not a retailer, all three.
Oh, yeah, we better look into the definition of that, that was probably in our last.
It was in a previous.
Yeah, it was, it was in the January 22th.
Do you have that available, Dave?
I do, right here.
Let's just double-check that definition. Cultivate no more than 150 plants, process and package, conduct, retail, sale, and transfer.
Did you find it there?
Yeah, it's on page three of our, whatever this was, from the last. And that's straight from the state? Right. So. It's kinda like an all-in-one little business, you grow it, you process it, and you sell it. So I would suggest general business.
In general, general and segregated, wasn't it?
Yeah, although we have such a small area of segregated business. And I don't know that I'd want retail in segregated business.
True.
I don't know that I'd want that particular land use in DD either, because single-family homes are permitted in DD, multi-family homes are permitted in DD. But I suppose, once we get into the detailed use regulations, we can buffer that with specifics, churches, alcoholic, uh.
Rehab schools.
Rehab centers and schools, but we can really buffer with anything that we want, we could say within 300 feet of a home, residential land use or zone, so there's different ways to do that. I guess I would allow it, in my view, in DD and GB, as long as we tighten up the provisions for how that could occur in the development district.
Where did you see this micro? I'm looking at medical marijuana, there's five listed.
It's in the.
Recreational, right?
No, he's got it right there, in the definitions from last packet.
Can we agree on five for a land use intensity?
Oh, right there, nine, I can't even see that. Yes, sir, that's right there.
Because if you think they're doing all, I mean, they're doing all three of, of the functions, it would be a higher intensity than even the.
So, what did we decide on micro-business? DD?
My suggestion was DD and GB only.
Okay.
With a land use intensity of five.
Okay, sounds good. Recreation marijuana designated consumption establishment, sounds like a bar for marijuana.
Mm-hmm, and I would suggest only GB for that.
Yep.
Just, okay.
And I would also suggest a land use intensity of five.
All right. Okay, we're now on page 10.
Is that what a bar comes up to, is five?
Yes.
Temporary marijuana event, page 10.
This is the only one I think should be in SK, except for S.
Mm-hmm.
And GB and segregated business. I'm not sure if it belongs in segregated business, I think general business.
Yes. You could have it out in Forestville, you know, I mean, you know what I'm saying, but you know what I'm saying. Where it occurs naturally? I mean, but they have, they have events out there? Yes. You know, they have, you know. Actually, that got caked this year. Mm-hmm. But I mean, that, I mean, I wouldn't necessarily limit it to general business district, I mean, you could maybe have any of them, just put it as a special use permit and see what they, what, how it lays out. And actually, by allowing it perhaps in resource production, you're getting it out of the area and into a larger tract of land with a minimum lot size of 40 acres. you're getting it out of the area and into a larger tract of land with a minimum lot size of 40 acres.
Something.
Yeah, that would be a problem with that.
You know, it's like Beer Fest.
Do you have a general business and resource production?
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, let's go through this. So, um, FR. Forest Recreation.
That's not a bad suggestion either.
Okay. And then, uh, we, what about Scenic Residential?
I would not allow it in any residential.
So anything with...
Because the homeowner has the ability to
Have whatever.
Consume on-premise as it is.
Okay, all right. So no scenic residential.
Forest Recreation makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
SK.
Rural residential, no. Urban residential, no. And then, so we got general business, segregated business?
Yeah, we, I mean, the chances of it happening out there are slim and none, but we could certainly allow that to happen.
And then, of course, resource production, as we discussed. And I was looking for the right symbol to put there, and Dave's suggesting SK.
Yeah, because it's a special temporary.
It's a special, so you still have to have a public hearing, correct?
Mm-hmm. And then, and then, like any special use permit, the planning commission can place a sunset clause on that.
Okay.
You could specify, if they're asking, you know, hey, we're gonna have a hash bash, um, the week of, uh, April 20th or something, then, you know, you say, okay, well, that can occur during this time only, during these hours.
In this location?
Yes.
Okay. So those are all SKs. Okay, let's move on to...
What about, uh, I guess there's no real buffer yard requirement or the land use intensity with that one?
Well, I thought we said five, where I had five.
But we can add that.
I mean, you've got
Okay.
A travel agency is five.
Okay.
Okay.
Are there any restrictions on how big that could be, or parking, or people attending, or the amount of land used by it?
The re, the requirement in the application would, would require that they submit all of that in their proposal. What they plan on, as far as attendance, yeah, what they're gonna do with parking, are they gonna be shuttling people, are they gonna provide parking? Where are they gonna provide parking? Those kinds of things. So you'd be able to review all of that with an application.
Okay, the next six, uh, I'm sorry, next five additions are on page 14. We have medical marijuana safety compliance facility.
That's where a lot of testing and stuff goes on, so.
Okay, put a land use intensity of five?
Yep.
Where do we want that?
I would, I would think all of that, all of these five items on this page would belong in general business and segregated business.
Okay. All five?
Yeah.
They're all essentially the same.
Light industry in nature, almost, yeah.
Okay, so safety compliance facility, secure transporter. Okay, so, uh, land use intensities, I had a five for processor and four is for safety compliance facility? Four for a recreation marijuana secure transporter. Should they all be fives?
I think so.
Okay. So we'll keep all those fives. And Dave's saying general business and segregated business only for any of these.
I would agree with that.
Well, just because of what they're doing, actually, the safety compliance actually does testing.
Yeah, I mean, that could be done out of a small facility. I mean, one guy with a little electron microscope, and I think he could do a lot of stuff by himself. So, I mean, you, I mean, it's...
God, if he gets an electron microscope, I want to go see it.
I mean, some of those licenses are a hundred thousand bucks through the state, so, I mean, some of these guys have made some serious business, so.
I just want to make sure that we're zoned properly in the case that Northern Michigan University wants to develop a giant research and development district in the township.
Yeah. Well, maybe we should, you know.
And I think you should buy all of the segregated business property that we own and just do that.
They do have some, uh, they do own property in the township north of, um, the Blue Hair and Bluffs, and that is zoned resource production.
Do we want a special use permit for resource production then?
I mean, if you look at what happens in resource production, it's ideally, you know, it's, it's, it's extraction products. You're growing trees, you're extracting them, you're allowing gravel to occur, uh, mining and stuff like that. All it is, you know, it's, I don't see why you wouldn't.
Okay.
I can't really follow that in resource production. Makes sense.
So all five? Or no?
Any of the ones that deal with research or, or testing or processing, I would think that they could be potentially in resource production.
Okay, so all five of these on page 14, we're gonna add an S under resource production. Okay. I think that's it. Okay.
All right, well, how about this?
Okay.
We'll make these changes, bring them back, take a look at them. Next time, we'll talk about digging into and drilling down further into the, um...
The text.
The detailed use. That'll take a little bit more
That's gonna take a while.
Back and forth.
All right.
That's where you're really channeling in where you want, how you want it, and then density and stuff like that.
Okay, we're gonna move on to number eight, correspondence. US 41 corridor advisory group minutes, meeting minutes from January the 14th. Jason, were you there?
I was.
You want to fill us in on, I see Marquette Township's mentioned a few times.
Yeah, the, the last comment in the minutes was, uh, basically referring to this document that we, we reviewed at that meeting. So, uh, M.Dot didn't really want me to, um, make this a public thing yet, so I tried to do it in a way that still allowed me to discuss it with you and let you know that, what we're working on, but without, you know, having the media involved or anything like that.
That makes sense. Okay. And Verizon Store?
Uh, we're
Where's that supposed to go?
We're expected to receive their site plan by the end of the week. That's what their, uh, the city team is telling us, so.
Okay.
Oh, that's
The former, uh, River Valley.
We also have, uh, the approved road committee minutes from, uh, December the 3rd of 2019 in our packet. Mr. Wigan, you want to add anything on that? We got two sets of, uh, we have the draft from, uh, January 7th as well.
Essentially, the December and January 7th both deal with the same thing. One was, uh, opening the package, uh, dealing with the RFP for the 2020 maintenance work. And on the January 7th, we go over to the February meeting where they made, the recommendation has already been made to the board. And the board will get that, I think it's in the Tuesday packet, I would think. The recommendation from the road committee on what roads to do, and I assume it's there.
Okay. I see where I got that, number 12 on the draft of, uh, January 7th. Wigan asked Deiterston to look into how or if the former special use agreements with the current vacant Chevrolet property will transfer to the new property owners.
Yeah, but I thought they were, they went with the property, not the business.
Which would allow them to remain.
Yeah.
Wasn't Frye working with, uh, the engineer Savlin, was, was that still in progress when they just?
No.
That was done?
No, that was done.
It was done because they had to get all of that complete before they could sell the property.
Okay, okay. Which is good.
And which is, in my view, the only reason that they complied in a timely fashion, well, I shouldn't say timely, it took us five years.
Yeah.
But when we really started dropping the hammer on, telling them that we were gonna revoke their, um, variance, that's when they got busy.
Okay, 8D, we have a winter farm market flyer for February the 20th.
Yeah, the mall's been, uh, Todd Nordike and his crew have been trying to draw up business and activities in the mall, which I commend them for. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware that that was happening. I haven't personally been to one yet, but has anybody actually?
I haven't.
I've wired us to one, but I didn't get that.
No report?
No.
Okay.
But I've, uh, I've heard Troy Graham before, he's interesting, writer and singer. Um, next item, we have asset management 101 training for local officials on February the 20th, same day.
Yeah, I figured only two of the planning commissioners may be interested in that, just because of their other roles. But of course, I wanted to make sure that, um, the planning commission's aware of any trainings that are, uh, available, especially in Marquette area. So if you're interested in that, shoot me an email, I'll make sure Lois or myself signs the, put that.
8F, proposed senate bill 431, sand and gravel mining preemption memo. Mr. McCarthy?
We've been
Nice memo.
Monitoring that situation, um, and Supervisor Durant approached me to draft a memo to present to the board to see if they concurred with, um, basically our disapproval of that. And so that memo was drafted, subsequently supported by the board. That was turned into a letter, of which Supervisor Durant has the ability to send out to whoever she sees fit. And I just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware that that was in play. Obviously, there's some, you want to keep local control and make sure that we can, um, you know, crushing hours, uh, safety, dust control. All of those things are very important, because if you, I always ask, well, I'll ask you to think about this, but I always think about it in my mind. You think that Painted Dolan has a pit, uh, at the end of, uh, Morgan Meadows Road, right? So, uh, they do crushing down there, they, you know, it's not all year long, but, um, I always think of that example, how you have that pit basically into a, what is now zoned rural residential. And for the most part, it was resource production, but we rezoned that at the last, during the last time we did the zoning map. And so, you know, it's important for us to maintain, in my view, local control of that stuff, otherwise it gets out of hand. And, um, some of those same special use permit conditions you would place on an application like that, we wouldn't have the ability to do recamation plans, things like that.
Thanks for writing that letter and supporting that, or not supporting it.
Has that bill come out of committee or anything? I mean, where is that bill, you know?
I don't believe it's come out of committee yet.
I don't think so. It's been going around for years, I went up to, um, whole township last year, and they were real concerned about it, and they had a couple of meetings up there. And then I didn't hear any more until MTA came up with this and started talking about it again. So I did forward Jason's letter to MTA, to, um, what's her name, the one lady, to Saint Julie. And, um, Senator Peter Peterson.
Great.
You know, I mean, even if you look at the township focus, I was checking that out, in the inside Lansing legislative lowdown, there's one, two, three, four, five. Five of the top, what, 20 maybe, are all to limit local regulation. And all this different transportation, um, preventing us from cooperating with federal authorities on immigration and just crazy stuff. Child foster care, zoning combining, which is 431. They just keep wanting to take more and more away from us, from control. So, Jason did an excellent job on, I, I didn't change anything, I just put it in a letter and sent it.
Nice. Thank you. Reports, Township Board Report. We have Mr. Wigan and Ms. Supervisor Durant.
Not a lot, mostly housekeeping issues.
Okay.
Dealt with a, a policy waiver for firefighters association meeting and, uh, took a look at, and we talked about the Headley memo, what it does to the millage for the fire department. And we decided we're gonna take a look at that next year and about moving it back up, uh, putting it back on the ballot so we can get it back up to the others that was intended to. You guys are aware that Headley rolls it back every year based on whatever magic they use. Um, the only thing of any significance, we had the, the letter of non-support for Senate Bill 431, but, uh, most of the discussion was on the manager's candidate, uh, replacement. That's in process. We're waiting to hear back from, from, uh, the candidate one last time, is Dennis Sleminen? And one last time, I don't know if that's gonna be a two days meeting or not, we haven't heard from him.
No, he, he had his board meeting tonight, and whether he looked at it or not, he got it this morning. And I did text him to tell him that it was in his email. So I believe he wants to have his attorney look at it, so whether I hear back from him, you know, of course, there's...
So we're just going back and forth on potential contracts and haven't come to one that both sides agree on yet, so that's where that stands.
Thank you. Do you want to add to your road committee report?
Uh, no, just to, the, uh, the recommendation went to the, to the manager, he's gotta forward that onto the board. I suspect it's gonna be in Tuesday's board packet. They committed quite a bit over budget on the estimate, so we had $53,000 in the budget, and I think it committed $96,000. But there were a couple of alternative solutions in there that we can eliminate one and drop it down to 60-some thousand dollars, so. It's not hard to get it back down to budget, but it gets a little more painful as the lower you try and get it. And the recommendation of the road committee was that it, uh, we eliminate the, the chip seal on a number of roads that were earmarked for by Roadsoft. And that would take it down to about the $66,000 mark, which has totally just 13,000 over budget. If we want to take it too much below that, we're gonna get into eliminating some of the, uh, the crack seal, which is not a good option, because if you eliminate crack sealing this year, then next year it's a little more intensive than crack sealing. So the price goes up, so I'm not sure you save any money other than saving it this year. So that remains to be seen what the board does with that on Tuesday.
Commerce is pretty bad out here.
Well, and a little update on commerce, the, uh, Michigan Tech was doing that, uh, they were gonna do a test road out here and use some recycled rubber, and they've decided they're not gonna do that project, so. Uh, we don't know what they're gonna do with commerce now.
Is that road, uh, considered a, it's a local road?
No, it's a trunk line.
Trunk line, okay.
So it's not part of the local road millage.
Means we have to send, uh, Mr. Iwanaki a valentine.
Yeah, I remember the last time it was done, it was done, uh, the county did that on their own. And we do have a couple of problems that were addressed. In the, uh, road millage maintenance, and that's venture where it comes in there, and it's kind of falling apart on the approach to commerce. And, um, the Moran on the other side has got a few issues, so those are still in the road rehab maintenance. We thought we could get rid of them if they were gonna do commerce, but then they pulled out of the commerce project, so. Those are still in the, the estimate that went to the, that's going to the board on Tuesday.
Okay, good.
Okay, Recreation Committee Report. As I mentioned before, Todd Carruth is the chair, I'm a vice chair, and Dave Wigan is the secretary. Currently, we'll be looking at our bylaws, it's been about seven years since they've been updated. And, uh, also working on our plan for this year, looking at the goals that we'd like to accomplish. Iron Range Roll's coming up, Spring Cleanup is coming up. Iron Range Roll is always Trails Day, which is the first Saturday in, uh, June, and this year it's on the 6th of June. Okay, announcements. Any other additional announcements? Additional comments by planning commissioners, let's start with Mr. Johnson.
The only thing I've got is I'm gonna be gone the second half of April. So, if we have a meeting, is three people enough for a quorum?
Yes.
Okay. Good enough. So I expect you guys are gonna be here.
Oh, it'd just be one meeting that you'd miss.
Okay.
Okay, um, I don't have any additional comments, Mr. Wigan?
No, I have not, I'm on a little vacation too, but I'm gonna miss the planning commission meeting, so I'll, I'll be here for those.
Which meeting are you gonna miss?
I'm not gonna miss any, I'm just checking the calendar.
Okay, great. That's good news. Well, with that, I will... Well, with that, I will adjourn this meeting at 8:09.
There's nothing on the agenda so far.
I'm sorry?
Sorry, there's nothing on the agenda so far. It's still blank, so she hasn't started filling anything.
For the board?
We've got to work on it tomorrow before noon.
Okay.
So if there's something special, I put on there to add that one item.
So who have you been yelling at?
Let's just call.
I'll have to call Reggie and console him. All right. We're done. Couple weeks.
Is this right, Dave? Dave, I was looking at Dave, Jason. We're here at the bottom.
Brickyard to Iroquois.
Iroquois in the downtown township, downtown?
Um, no, I believe Iroquois is, uh, close to where 510 is.
It's a little tough.
Okay, so, well, Brickyard doesn't go up that far, doesn't it?
But they're seeing a long 41 from Brickyard up to that point.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yep.
So you won't be here for the 22nd meeting?
I will not, that's actually my birthday too.
All right, and it's your birthday too.
That's right, okay, my birthday. It's a good day to go on.
Yeah, start looking at that a little deeper.
I will be actually flying to Dublin that day.
Ireland? Cool, that sounds like fun.
We're leaving on the 16th, we're going to fly to England. My sister lives in Bath. She, she, my sister's been living in Europe since she was 19. So her husband retired from the State Department, he was an economist in Brussels, so he, he knows wealth. So they moved back to England, but they lived in Paris, we saw them there, they lived in Brussels, we saw them there, we visited them with London. So we're going to go to London for a long weekend, they're going to rent a place, we've got some nieces that live in London, so we're going to do that. And then we'll fly to Dublin and then drive the Wild Atlantic Way and drink Irish whiskey.
Oh, Irish whiskey?
I did 2,500 miles on the Wild Atlantic Way.
Did you? Yeah, we had to start right around Galway, come down, go all the way around. We had to go see some whales on a cork.
Yeah.
Oh.
And then drive back to Dublin, and fly from Dublin to the soup.
When you go to, uh, when you go to Dingo.
Yep, that's where we're going.
There's a dolphin there. That's famous. Can't remember the name.
Yeah, no, it's, uh, so we're thrilled, so we got a place to land up. And from Sault Ste. Marie to London, 11 hours.
Yeah.
Huh? That's pretty good.
That's not bad, and that's two hours in Toronto.
Yeah.
That sounds bad to me.
So we're looking forward to that.
Oh, you should.
That's a trip of a lifetime. Sounds like you've been going to Europe a lot.
Yeah, we were, we were in Barcelona three years ago, and then we drove into southern France and then northern Spain again. Yeah, no, it's, once you learn how to drive with GPS, it's great.
Oh, yes.
We did that with a map once, trying to drive through Switzerland.
Uh-oh.
No.
I drove a little Nissan Juke stick on the wrong side of the road for 2,500 miles.
I won't do that, I won't do that. I had a Volkswagen Rabbit, and we were in Switzerland, it had a pad clutch when I got, I still have them, I'm running back.
Smelling.
Oh, yeah, no, it's, uh...
Good for you.
Yeah, I know, we're looking forward to it.
I love Ireland, I'm already planning to go back.
Yeah, so we, you know, I've been...
That's where you guys got married, wasn't it? Jason? You and Carol?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so it's, uh, it should be fun. My sister and her husband, they're a bunch of laughs. We really hit it hard.
Lots of wrong calls, where you can, uh...
And just buy the Adderall, get a treatment or something, anyway, you can talk to us.
Okay. Was there a guy or something that definitely...
Come on. Drive safely.
It isn't, uh, it isn't Ray, I was the guy who shot me.